Let's get started, folks. We'll start with our traditional moment of silent reflection. Thank you very much. And our honoree of the night, April Keating. If you wouldn't mind, if you'd lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One of the coolest things I get to do, not sitting on the insurance company with Skinner and Thomas, is doing these honorary proclamations.
Wait a minute. Hold on, let me take a look at the lawsuit.
Just to myself, right? And I'd ask April Keating to join me up front as she would. There's an old show, This Is Your Life, that you'd be too young to probably know about it, but anyway.
No, I'm not.
I've heard stories about it. I'm not old enough to know about it.
Oh, really?
Not like I was born in the 50s, anyway. All right, this is a proclamation. Whereas the council of the city, if I can, that's what we say, too. We resolve during a regular meeting of October 18, 2018, to honor from time to time residents of our Buchanan Upsher community who perform extraordinary service while embracing the kind and giving spirit of volunteerism. And whereas Buchanan has long championed community service and has recognized persons who have given selflessly for the benefit of our city's fire department, Stockard Youth and Community Center, and police department, but had not until recently formally recognized others who generally perform many other acts of service and kindness. And whereas with the 2018 establishment of our Buchanan Volunteer Center, the city council deemed it to be reasonable and appropriate to henceforth recognize our community's most giving volunteers with previous honorees of the Buchanan Exemplary Service Testimonial, that's the best award, being Amanda Hayes. She's right over there. Zachary Musler, Robin Keough, Shirley Tinney, Bill Nicholson, Dr. Joseph Reed, and Dr. Paul Richter. Now therefore, I, as mayor of the city of Buchanan, pursuant to the power and authority duly vested in me, do hereby proclaim as our city's eighth recipient of our Buchanan Exemplary Service Testimonial Award for May of 2019 to be April Keating. Mrs. Keating is a supreme protector of our environment. In addition to being the founder of Buchanan's annual River Fest, April currently serves on the Buchanan River Watershed Association's Board of Directors and as a volunteer water monitor for Trout Unlimited and the West Virginia Rivers Coalition, a lobbyist for clean water in both our state and federal governments, a co-founder and currently president of the Mountain Lakes Preservation Alliance, a past board member of the West Virginia Sierra Club, a participant in Buchanan's Community Unity and Kindness Day, the Equality March, the Science March, and other awareness activities. April serves on the Board of Eye Care, the International Cancer Alliance for Research and Education, is a fervent advocate for clean energy adoption and acceleration, a charter member of Create Buchanan, and a member of SUBA, that's the Southern Upsher Business Association. April Keating has helped us all in our BU community be happier and healthier in many ways. I direct the establishment of our city's new best bench and installation of a permanent placard in Ja Boon Park to forever honor and recognize April Keating and all past and future honorees of our city's best award. I further urge all residents to join our city's most honored guest, April Keating, her husband Chip, her family, friends, and admirers, and me, along with all members of our city government family during our public ceremony to be conducted at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, May 14, 2019, as we honor our city's eighth recipient of our best award. We all wish April the best as she continues to work for our BU community. May every resident be mindful of the importance of community service and giving of oneself and be inspired to give selflessly for the benefit of others as we pay tribute to the many substantial contributions of our exceptional volunteers, including the eighth recipient of our city's best award, April Keating, given under my hand, hey, and the official seal of the city of Buchanan this 14th day of May. We congratulate you.
Look over here.
At the pink lady. Is that strawberries, then, Commander?
That's right. Do you want to come with your family?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, please.
Here, I'll let you hold your gizmo back. Looking all over the place. Katie's gonna wipe my eyes out and make me look like a Cooper.
No. Don't go anywhere. I would like to thank everyone who's responsible for this, and may I say a few words?
Absolutely.
I came here in 1985 with a scholarship to Wesleyan, and there met my husband, Chip Keating, who has been a philosophy professor at Wesleyan since 1977. We homeschooled our three kids, and I worked part-time for many years. In 2010, I started learning about fracking, and in 2014, I got involved in fighting pipelines to save our water, our great biodiversity, and our working families who need better jobs, as well as our planet, the only one we have. I think of myself as an environmental advocate, as I try to give voice to the environment at a time when it has little, and for the people affected by its degradation the most, who are usually poor, as many of us here in Deep Appalachia will tell you. I'm from here. My mother, Iris Bell, wrote our state's centennial song, "This Is My West Virginia," which became the centennial song soon after it was declared by the legislature to be our state's song back in 1962. The centennial designation was to celebrate the state's 100th birthday. To my mother, it was a tribute to this land she loved so very much. Every year when its birthday comes around again, I'm sad that I haven't done more to get the song out there. It is my dream to have the song taught to all children in West Virginia schools by grade five. My three kids are all musicians, like both my parents were, and they are always up for a spirited conversation, which they take from their father, the philosopher, and their mother, the activist. Being from Charleston and having spent two years in Ann Arbor, Michigan, as a young child, I thought of myself as a city girl. Ann Arbor shaped my views of this state and the world in ways I could never have been shaped had I not moved outside of the state. I was sad to leave Ann Arbor, but now I'm glad I moved back. I have found myself welcomed, loved, and appreciated, despite my quirks. I have made lifelong friends and found some of the most generous and loving people, people of beauty and character, right here in this small town. I am excited about the changes we are making together as a community. I'm excited by the productive energy, and I feel blessed to be a part of it. My time here hasn't always been perfect, but it has helped me grow in ways I never expected. As you present me with this award today, I want to thank Buchanan for what you have done for me. I didn't know it until now, but I am home.
If you'd like, we'd love to make your remarks a part of our minutes. You could give that to Abby Jenkins.
Sort of, sure.
And you guys are all welcome to stay for the entire meeting. I hate to say that the highlight has already occurred. The highlight has probably already occurred.
That means we can go home, too?
You get paid the big bucks to stick around for two hours.
Well, we can't help you make the decision, so we were not going to stick around.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you for coming. Yes, ma'am.
Meanwhile, there's Colonel Bull out there.
Oh, yeah. Don't want to miss out on that.
A little peanut in the back that wants to go check it out.
Yeah, and thanks for indulging me with my little speech.
Oh, that's very well put.
Yes.
Thank you.
Our next guest is Mary Dean, who's going to tell us a bit about her career exploration opportunities. And Mary came to see me, I don't know, five or six weeks ago, and I think we've got you booked for the community and training room.
I hope so.
Yeah, I hope so, too. So, Mary, welcome to the council.
Thank you. Give you a little bit of a heads up about what you saw about the Buchanan Adjustment Center and the Western Department of Rehabilitation Services are partnering to create and offer a career exploration opportunity seminar. And some of the topics that will be covered will be positive attitude, skills assessment, how to prepare a resume, job applications, job search plan, how to prepare and dress for an interview, and job retention. The participants will be between the ages of 14 and 21, and will be referrals from the Department of Rehabilitation. Depending upon the number of referrals, we could have up to 30 participants. This will be a four-day session, starting Tuesday, June 25, and ending Friday, June 28, from 9:00 AM till 4:00. We will be inviting people to speak about various employment opportunities, sharing in some fun exercises such as team building and role-playing, and some of you just may be asked to volunteer. We appreciate the city allowing us to use the public state training room to provide positive support and encouragement to young people seeking gainful employment. So, and I also did a little placement advertisement, put a Buchanan Upsher work adjustments in our business card there. So, but again, any questions about what we're doing on this?
Do you anticipate there'll be 20, 30 participants? Isn't that what you indicated?
Yes. The Department of Rehabilitation is actually working with various clients they already have, and also going to the high schools and giving to people that, as a matter of fact, last night, they had to be 11, and they're talking for 10 more. So I know there's gonna be at least 21. The max we can do is 30. This is a program that the Department of Rehabilitation actually did for the prior three years, and they put it on themselves, and now they're putting it out to CRPs, which is the Buchanan Upsher Adjustment Center as a CRP, and that's, they're putting it through us. So they'll pay us some money to be able to do this, and we actually are paying the participants a nice sum of money for every hour they're there.
You know, it's become a cliche. I've said it so many times the past three years about we're all in it together. In addition to that, we all have our challenges, but some folks have more challenges than others. And this opportunity for us as a community to support your efforts, to go the extra mile, to help folks believe and feel that they are mainstreamed and just as much a part of this community because they are as everybody else, our hats are off to you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, Mary, before we, June 25 through the 28th?
25 through 28.
We'll try to pop in and, yeah, participate a bit.
Yes, and I do appreciate having you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you. Thanks, Mary. Enjoy the strawberry festival.
Yep, we hope it goes good. Mike Lubin, I don't see him, so he must have decided he's not, he wanted to talk about a parking matter, and we've explained to him that parking matters are taken up by Consolidated Public Works, so maybe he's headed there. Department of Board Reports. First up is Callie Crowden-Sams, our information coordinator and drug researcher writer. How's it going, Callie?
Great, thank you. Flip over to my report. Just starting with the website and social media like I normally do. Had a number of posts that did quite well. Thank you to Lita Hicks for all the nice painting that she does downtown. That definitely, I think, had the most views on Facebook. Over 3,000 people saw that, and we certainly appreciate everything she does on mainstream. It's really looking great, as it always does this time of year. And also wanted to thank Casey Earl, who did the nice artwork on our fire department. Looks very nice as well. We shared that as well, and that did get a couple thousand shares or views as well. And then Carrie Lane and Michaela Lane at Stockard Youth and Community Center, they did a nice painting on the door there. If you haven't seen it already, it's really nice as well. It's kind of a farm scene with strawberries in the back of the truck. So town and all of our city facilities are looking great, and we're all excited for Strawberry Festival. It's also, May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and so the folks from the Depression and Bipolar Support Alliance stopped in and wanted to raise awareness and reduce stigma for folks if they're having any kind of mental health symptoms, so be sure to reach out and get help. So we shared that information as well. We have the surplus property auction coming up, so that information is out there and was shared quite a bit. And a few other posts there that you see that didn't get a lot of money. Oh, and our congratulations to our firefighters as well, who only got those promotions. Of course, we also did share the information about Colin Ritter stepping down and the council's approval of the timeline moving forward to get that position filled. So that information is out as well. Let's see, and then moving down into grants, Casey and I, the Buchanan Volunteer Center, she's been doing some good work to get Community Unity and Kindness Day set and ready to go. We've already set a date for the 5th of October, so mark your calendars for that. We'll be doing Community and Kindness Day again, and she's just sent some information out about that. So any organizations in town, service organizations that would like to have a host site, please contact Casey, and she will get that into our planning and start inviting them as well to our planning meetings. For grants that I'm working on, for applications and researching, working with Suzanne Britton with the Buchanan Academy Elementary School, as well as Stockard and the Theater, to do a 21st Century Community Learning Center with two sites, one being Bay's and the other two being a combo of Stockard and the Theater, to do some after-school and summer programming, or expand on the after-school and summer programming that Stockard offers. The Transportation Alternatives Program, we have two applications. I've been working on J for that. These are all on strategic possible, so I don't know how much you want me to talk about it now, or I'll just kind of give you a little brief right now, and then we can talk more about them later. But the Re-Clitor Control Grant that we used, we had this grant from last year, so this would be a continuation for the Good Neighbor Program, so another one there, strategic. And then the Community Policing and Development Grant, and looking at that for possibility for the junior vets, and having worked on Chief Gregory and Steve Wykow and some of the officers with the police department on that one. Moving over, of course, it's Strawberry Week, so those, that's the big upcoming event, right, or ongoing event. And then we have Web Grub Day tomorrow, our Service to Youth Champion at Stockard on Thursday, and Friendly Way Day on Friday. Those are all at 3:00 in the afternoon. And the Web Grub Day happening at the Public Safety Complex, Friendly Way Day also at Public Safety Complex, and of course, our Service to Youth Champion at Stockard Youth and Community Center. And then looking down the way a little bit, the Buchanan Dog Park rededication will be happening on the 25th at 11:00 at the dog park. The dog park committee is planning that. Then we have the 27th is Memorial Day, and then the 31st, Festival Fridays, is kicking off. So it's been exciting months, and we hope it's warm again soon.
That's a lot of stuff. You'd be there to take pictures of all these things, right?
All of them, everything.
Callie is motioning. Questions, Callie? Thanks, Callie. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Jerry Arnold is at a week-long conference in Philadelphia that he calls the Dirt and Water Conference. I think it's sustainability kind of a thing, mostly.
We got a grant for that, too.
We got a grant for that, that's right.
Don't they know it's Strawberry Festival Week?
Well, Jerry is...
Well, Jerry skipped.
This would be Jerry's 50th Strawberry Festival. I'll have to tell you how old he is, and I think maybe he was looking to finally get out of town for a week, but anyway, that's our story, and we're sticking to it. Mrs. Jenkins, our Director of Finance and Administration.
Okay, my report's gonna be short. First of all, I want to publicly apologize to Dave Thomas for not giving me the...
She forgot to pick him up.
Okay, so today I'm gonna give you your balances for your enterprise funds. That's what I always do on this second meeting of the month. Sanitary Department's checking was $577,471. This is for balances the end of April. Their CDs are $190,745. Water Board's checking $367,858, with CDs at $956,249, and they still have some ACP money in there at $291,332. The Waste Department's checking was $643,270, and CDs $57,226. Consolidated Public Works Board checking $146,443, and they still have a cemetery CD $127,000. I'm still working on enterprise budgets, and the very first one got approved for this fiscal year in the sanitary board, just prior to this meeting. Their budget this year is $2.5 million. It's going to include $175,000 in plant and pump work, some capital improvements, $165,000 for new equipment, and then it has the $55,100 for the second payment and final payment towards the UV units. And then there's about $30,000 for outside engineering costs, and we're gonna put another $50,000 in the reserve funds. That's pretty much my report. I mean, nothing too exciting.
Good report. Questions, Abby? Thanks, Abby. We know that putting these budgets together for our four utility boards are immensely time-consuming. They're always stuck. Police Chief Matt Gregory. Wow, especially, especially it's dressed down for it.
Yeah. Stint to my meeting in Charleston today.
You should set the good suit out to the cleaners during ours Web Grub.
Yeah, that's it. I'm just gearing up.
I'm just probably, it'll be funny when the blue lights come on after that one.
Is that where it is?
It's funny on so many grounds. Go ahead, where you got it?
We're not too busy this week. Of course, we're in the midst of the Strawberry Festival, beginning with the Horse and Carriage Parade just this past weekend, and I think another successful parade. We're gearing up for the rest of the week. Just prior to this week, the police department participated in another roundup that took place throughout the city and the county as a result of many months of investigations by our task force members. A number of individuals were arrested for felony drug crimes. As of right now, we only have one person that is still out at large. And that is Timothy Strickland. That's who we've been looking for since last week. So our efforts continue in that regard.
How many did you round up?
14, well, we have 14 that are arrested now, and then Mr. Strickland makes the 15th person.
Is he the one that's considered on in danger?
Yes.
Where's he from?
He's from here. He's from Buchanan.
How old?
Mid-30s. So our efforts continue with that. Very good efforts with the task force. It's another fine example of the interworking relationship of each of the agencies that are involved. In addition to the task force, officers from each of our agencies worked together in teams to arrest these individuals safely. That was the utmost priority at the end of the operation, and I'm proud to say that that occurred. In addition to the interworking relationship, this is another fine example of good relationships that we have with the community, and the information that we receive from members of the community that give us tips, give us information. And having this task force appointed allows us to follow up more effectively on those. We continue to accept applications for our Youth Police Academy. Deadline for application is June 7. The youth academy will be held the last full week of June this year, which is the week of June 24. A number of hands-on activities planned for the participants, including guest speakers from the State Police Crown Lab that come up. We have guest speakers from the FBI Center. We bring in a DUI simulator, and we also take little tours around town to focus on things like the cop center and the OEM. I have a number of applicants already. We're still accepting more, so if you know of any buddy that would be interested, it's open to middle school and high school students. The best part of it is that it's free of charge. And one thing that I notice, in addition to getting to know the officers on a personal level, this is a unique opportunity for individuals with a wide array of interests in criminal justice. It doesn't just have to be police work, but any aspect of criminal justice, to make personal connections, for instance. We had a young lady who was interested in forensic sciences, and we were able to make a personal connection with a lab technician with the state police lab, and they exchanged emails, and she was able to gain much more information as she pursued her career directly from the source. So a unique opportunity for youth. The only other thing is, as we continue to gear up for the Strawberry Festival, we will celebrate the dedication of our Blue Wall tomorrow. I'd like to thank everybody who made this possible, Mayor. This is something that you and I have talked about for a number of years, and I'm just truly glad to see it come to fruition. Hats off to Jerry Arnold and the individuals at the different utilities who worked on this and made this possible. If you haven't seen it yet, it's, the craftsmanship is truly second to none. It's a really impressive piece of, I think, public art and in our community. So we will dedicate that tomorrow at 3:00. And our honoree this year is my mentor, the Long Cop Chief, Chief Fred Gudde. That's all I have in my search questions.
Questions, your Matt? Matt, with the roundup that you said 14, were there any minors?
No, they're all dogs.
You said Timothy Strickland, right?
Yes.
All right. I used to know him in the past, so I haven't heard from him in years, but anybody with information has urged to contact the council.
Well, last I heard from him, he was living in Valley Green, and that's all I know.
Yeah, that was our information.
They always say, you don't ask the question, you don't have the answer to. I don't mean to put you on the spot if you can't remark, but were any of the problematic places along Cleveland Avenue involved with this?
There was one, yes. Okay, for sure. As part of the continuing prosecutorial efforts of the task force, we are reviewing each of the locations where these incidents took place to make sure how many were in the city and whatever occurred in the city pursuant to the Drug Abatement ordinance that the city passed earlier this year, we will follow up with. I do know of one in particular that was on Cleveland Avenue.
Thanks, Chief.
As part of your report here, you have all the 2019 warnings on a spreadsheet here, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but it seemed like we were writing more warnings than citations up until this month, when we wrote 18 warnings and 81 citations. I wonder if that was intentional, or there was some other directive, or something else going on?
The 18 warnings that you're looking at is for the month of May. This is a printout that Tim gives me. He keeps it current, so every day that warnings come in, he updates it. And so when I ask for it, it's usually mid-May when I'm compiling the report for the prior month, so he doesn't exclude current.
Oh, I see. So April's 108, and April citations is 81, so, okay. And the other thing, I see mileage is blacked out for individual units. Is that intentional?
Right. Yes. It just got too confusing because, especially with...
Different cars.
With different cars being used by different officers, especially since a quarter of our staff now park the cars at the agency. And for instance, I used car 10 today to go to Charleston because I was being detailed for the festival here. So the way we swap cars and use cars universally, it's kind of a moot point to track it to an individual officer, so we just take the total fleet mileage, which is actually historically what we always done, maybe after this.
So how's it working out with the officers that aren't taking a car home and are? Is there any issues arising out of that?
Not that I anticipated at this point in time. I think it's okay with it. Almost half of our fleet is on the Enterprise plan, and of course, that's something that we anticipate to have a whole fleet on as we move forward over the next four or five years. And the cars on the Enterprise plan, especially, will have been over than five years, and it's part of the maintenance program. We have a maintenance program through Enterprise that arrangement as well. And I just anticipate, as we continue along that path, we'll save quite a bit of cost on maintenance, what we were currently paying in the past, paying for maintenance, we're gonna realize quite a bit of savings. quite a bit of savings down the road. And even the cars that aren't on the maintenance or on the Enterprise plan right now, the oldest that we have in our fleet right now is seven years old, but they're still doing pretty good because we have a maintenance program where we do inspections of the car. While we do, officers do daily inspections of the cars, but we do performance inspections every six thousand miles, so that's really helpful for the longevity of the fleet.
Remember that we didn't take the cruiser away from anyone that already had one. It's just been the last couple of three hires. And as they evolve to, I think it's corporal status, five years they're eligible to become corporal. The carrot, the added benefit is, is at that point they get their undesigned cruiser.
Hey, Matt, are the VIBs working this week, other than just the parade?
Oh, yeah, some working.
Yeah, they are. They're out actually right now. There's four or five of them at the Carver Mall. They're one of the various events, and then there'll be some at the car show tomorrow. And usually what we do when we establish the VIB schedule is we take the entire, everything of Strawberry Festival week, and they start selecting different things that they represent the city and the police department as well.
Still working on junior VIBs, right?
We are, yeah. In fact, that will be an extension of youth academy. We hope to. We have some rough drafts of the junior VIBs policy manual and the guidelines that Ambie and Tom have both reviewed as well. We've been passing that back and forth. And I'm working with Steve Wyckoff, the VIBs coordinator, who created these, and he's adding tweaks as some are needed. And our hope is to kickstart the junior VIBs program with the youth academy and then just kind of softly roll it out as we get into the next school year.
Officer Coach still adapting well?
He is, yes, absolutely. We submitted his application to the police academy as early as we could. In fact, one of the things that we were going prior to his swearing in was getting his medical and everything already in place, which is a major component of the police academy application. And so within the first week of his start of appointment, we were actually able to submit that application to the academy, which is a good thing because in the meeting I was at in Charleston today, the deadline for applications for the next academy, which begins July fifteenth, sounds like a long way off, the deadline's May, at the end of May thirty-first, there's already eighty applicants.
Wow.
There's quite a backlog. They usually take between fifty and sixty, and they'll have a wait list on top of that. So we don't know where we rank within the eighty, because usually it's first come, first served. That's why we tried to get it out as soon as we could. They are, the academy is trying to, after the July fifteenth academy, they are looking at two more police academies on top of each other in August. So institute will be a very busy place this late summer or fall.
Sure. Other questions, Chief Gregory? Tell all our folks in blue, I sometimes slip up and say, tell our guys in blue, Angel's going to smack me or arrest me.
Yeah, it's a violation.
Folks, our folks in blue, we appreciate them all. Be safe.
Thank you.
Is Officer McCauley fully recovered from what happened?
Yes, yes, she is. It was, she was under observation, and I guess for the benefit of what you're asking about, Officer McCauley had a fentanyl exposure over the weekend, and she was taken to the hospital for observation, and her test came back negative and got the clearance to come back. She didn't miss any work. She comes back to work.
It was a powder form and just blew in her face.
Yeah, that's great.
Crazy world. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Your attorney's Tom O'Neil.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of council. I don't have a lengthy report for the open portion of the meeting. The bulk of my work will be reported to you in our executive session later. I've been, of course, helping with various enterprise awards and different initiatives that, some of which will be brought up under strategic. With that being said, I'd be happy to take any questions, but other than that, I would frankly defer until the executive session for my report to you.
Bring you back up there in a few. Correspondence and information, you've got a ton of stuff in your packet. Notice of public meeting of the planning commission, June ten, and I think that's the last big meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, talking about the new 2025 comprehensive plan before they come in July and present it to us, isn't that right?
I believe so.
Since you're a planning commission member, I'm counting on you to give us.
Well, they canceled the meeting that was supposed to be Monday, right?
Yeah.
We rescheduled that?
I think they just determined they'd just wait and roll it into the June ten meeting. Notice of rescheduled meeting for the city council and our sanitary board. We were scheduled to meet on Thursday, June twentieth, and in keeping with our tradition, we bump it up two days to the Tuesday. Boy, we've got a lot of holidays that we're getting crushed by this year. D three, notice of rescheduled meeting for both the city council and the waste collection board. That would have been occurring on Thursday, July fourth. Instead, that'll be on Tuesday, July second, as we start into our new fiscal year. There's a letter that I addressed to the college that I'm going to pull up here if I can find it. It does me while I share this with council. This goes to President Dearstein and the CFO of college, Scott McKinney. Dear gentlemen, I'm writing, that's the August seventeenth letter.
August date?
That's not the, I don't think that's the right.
No, the page is in.
That date is not right. We changed the date. Teresa didn't get the most recent one in there, but I think the body of the letter is still correct. I'm writing first and foremost to thank our college's administration for permitting our Buchanan first responders, both our fire and police departments, to make use of the three recently razed houses on Randolph Street. By all accounts, the drills performed there by both city departments presented a terrific opportunity for everyone involved. Both police chief Matt Gregory and fire chief J.B. Kimble were extremely pleased to have the many members of their departments able to participate in such a perfect real-world venue. Additionally, the removal of three more dilapidated structures improves the appearance of our Randolph Street neighborhood. City zoning and housing enforcement officer Vincent Smith has expressed his appreciation as these three structures, long on the housing enforcement board's list, have now been removed. I often remark that the single biggest urban renewal project in Buchanan's long history is attributed to our college's efforts, particularly since the Great Flood of nineteen eighty-five. Since that horrible event, dozens and dozens of compromised and unsightly structures, first were acquired by Westland, and then were taken down during the past thirty-plus years, all thanks to W V W C. Vaughn Hartley has served as an excellent coordinator with our first responder agencies and with Mr. Smith to coordinate these recent raisings. Scott McKinney also has reached out to the city to commence our discussion about the city's use of the Camden Apartments for additional drills in June and during the first part of July, prior to those structures being raised. I will coordinate these activities with Dr. McKinney, and I anticipate a more formal letter of understanding forthcoming very soon. I understand that some external first response agencies may participate in these larger exercises to be conducted on Camden Avenue. Finally, I just want to observe our continued excellent partnership in so many college and city projects and activities. Scott and I are working on a project involving the extension of our Riverwalk Trail, which further will enrich and connect our campus and external communities. We will rededicate the ever-improving Dog Park on Saturday, May twenty-five, and we're very much welcome and appreciate college participation in that ceremony and celebration at eleven a.m. Our partnership at Starbury Youth and Community Center and our mutual support with the Parish House are but a couple of other important ways that we collaborate for the benefit of our Buchanan and Westland community. The new bike share program to be launched by our college in the fall has renewed discussion among city players to follow suit soon. The learning trail adjacent to the Riverwalk Trail and the community garden serving the Parish House, our collaboration in improving parking around campus, and the list goes on and on in the many ways we work together daily for the benefit of our entire community. I've remarked countless times during my thirty-six years here that as goes Westland, so goes Buchanan and vice versa. Our successes are interconnected, and our partnering is critical to advancing our campus and our town. Our city strongly supports our college mission and is committed to Westland's success. Thanks again, Mr. President, for continuing our many partnerships and collaborations. I look forward to helping to coordinate our many shared projects and activities in the years to come. Signed by me, and everybody and their brother gets a copy of that. There's a proclamation regarding National Hospital Nurses Week. Shout out to Skip Gilberg, who was honored as the hospital administrator of the year by that group, state group. There's a notice of an online public auction and the listing of the items to be sold. There's a thank you letter that went to the state regarding Wolf Creek Contracting. That's the excellent contractor that performed our ADA sidewalk project. There's a letter of support to the Westland Department of Education regarding Westland's application to host the governor's school for the arts. There's a notice of special city council meetings regarding the position of city recorder, and then there's a legal notice of the office of position of city recorder that reads much like a job description, taking things right out of our charter and state code. Takes us down to consent agenda that consists of three items. If you approve our consent agenda, you'll be approving the minutes from our last regular meeting on May two, the approval of our building and wiring permits, the list charted is in your packet, and the approval of the payment of our bills. I'd entertain a motion that we approve our consent agenda.
So move.
I have a motion by Mr. Robbins. I have a second by Mrs. Buckle. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by sitting.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign motion carries. Strategic issues for discussion and/or vote. Last time, we kicked around this draft that Cali had prepared, which was proposed approval of the council for press release and communication policy regarding our news media. CJ and Mr. Skinner were not here at that time, so we unanimously agreed to table it until the two of you could weigh in. Why don't we get it on the table and we can discuss it further? I would entertain a motion that we bring to the table F one, which is the policy regarding sharing of information with our news media.
So move.
I have a motion by Mr. Thomas. I have a second to his motion.
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Robbins. Is there discussion on the motion? Let's talk about it. Cali, do you want to say something first to lead us back into where we were twelve days ago?
Sure. What had happened was, I think there was a discussion at the supervisors' meeting last month, and just with the weather improving, warm weather, folks in streets and some of the other departments have quite a number of jobs they're working on, and just felt a little pressed for time and asked if I would approach the media, our local press corps here that we appreciate so much, and see if we might be able to, in order to increase efficiency and make sure they're able to be as productive as possible, see if they would be able to work with us and just coming to myself or council members, Ambie first before going to one of the department supervisors. And then, of course, we can set up an interview with them as needed, because I assume that would still be something they would like to have, but just have it be something that I could help facilitate.
I think it's maybe more important to discuss the exceptions, the exemptions to this policy. Nothing will change insofar as Amanda, Amy, Katie, Channel Five, Channel Twelve, the Exponent Telegram in Clarksville. It's the same for me and all members of the council.
Right.
We've not changed anything relative to communication with the elected members of our council. It's not changing relative to inquiries about emergency matters with either our police or fire departments. You should still contact our chiefs, just like you always have. If it's something on the new LED lighting project grant in the fire station, that's the kind of thing that would be, contact Cali so that you can get information or she can coordinate the dissemination of the information. Most of the things regarding our utility boards, and Jerry Arnold would go through you, and then you would do whatever is necessary to introduce the inquiring press member with those folks. Ambie is always available. She never leaves City Hall. She's here twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. So I don't, nothing changes relative to Ambie either. I think it's fair to say that nothing changes with you. They're gonna, you're gonna be as ever available as you always are.
For sure.
Really, mostly utilities.
Right, and even for Jerry, who can't speak for himself tonight, he did want to say to me that, you know, I feel like I have a friendship with all of you folks, and that this isn't, this is mainly just a streamlined operation that has nothing to do with any, you know, poor feelings or anything like that. He hopes that relationship continues, and he wants to continue to take interviews as time allows, but of course, he has a job to do as well, so.
I would observe, and I'm shooting from the hip as I say this, but since Cali's hired in January of 2018, we share our information more liberally than we have ever shared our information before. But it doesn't stop there. As we share all of this information, there are follow-up stories done by our members of our press. I have talked more in the last sixteen months with the folks at the Exponent Telegram in Clarksburg than I did in the thirty-five years as city attorney and the first couple of years as mayor. I mean, they get the press releases, and the folks in Clarksburg are curious about what's going on in Buchanan. So we don't want this to in any way be perceived as, oh, gee, what are they, they're going to hide something, or they're becoming, it's, we want to continue to be very liberal disseminators of all of our information.
Right. Accountability through disclosure, right? So how do you ladies feel about that?
That's what I was going to ask. I'd like to hear what the.
I think it's, I think it's great. I like to have one person that I know I can go to, it streamlines it, it's more time-efficient. I mean, for me, instead of trying to call people who might be busy leaving messages, waiting for them to get back with you, and back and forth, and then you get the whole phone texting and email, so I, I have no problem with it.
As a trained journalist, I'm opposed to the idea, but I discussed with Cali that I can understand with three publications plus news plus regional publications covering it, that I could understand why it was creating problems for Jerry and other people. Bigger cities do this anyway, and as I'm looking to move on in my career, I'm probably going to end up with this job in PR that's on the other side, so I'll be doing the same thing that Cali's doing. So, but I can understand from a practical standpoint why it's necessary.
But you say you, as a journalist, you oppose not going directly to the source, or...
Right, and that's just because of what I learned in J school.
Yeah.
But times have changed, you know, social media's changed a lot of things. We find out about stuff much earlier now than we used to, and so I think to help Jerry and some of the others not be bothered so much, I can definitely see it having a value for them.
I don't even think he would like to have you use that verbiage of bothered, but we expect a lot out of Jerry and his supervisors, I will tell you that.
Yeah, sometimes it's hard, though, to stop, change gears, get going, and then get re-engaged. So I can understand how that could slightly disruptive in the course of your day's activities, but...
And I think Cali will, there's calls that might not be more promptly returned. It could result in more expeditious information coming back to you because...
She could contact them.
Yeah, yeah.
And they would break off, speak to her, give her the, and then she could disseminate it to you.
That's the way I think it will play out. Let's give it a shot, and if we need to work out any kinks in the policy, I think we'll revisit it in six months and...
I mean, this is just a recommendation. There's no punitive action if they call Jerry.
Yeah. No, if they called Jerry Arnold, they'd send him, Matt, go pick him up.
We didn't hear from Katie.
And they have a constitutionally protected right, so I think this is more us asking for them to help us out and allow our operations to go smoothly, and we appreciate that, but they're doing their jobs too, and that's valuable.
Sure.
Needed for our community.
I mean, I don't love it, but I understand. Like, I think my main issue in the beginning was just like, I still want to be able to call Matt and JB or call down to the fire department and get someone who can tell me, you know, because Cali's not going to be... you know, because Cali's not gonna be wanting to take calls, and, you know, sometimes when things happen, and so the first responders, and as long as we can, and as long as we can still go to council members directly, and, and I was, I think my first initial reaction was like, I can't call Ambi because she, for me, has been a big source of help with financial things, and I want to be able to call her, and I feel like...
She's got lots of time on her hands.
Well, I, I know. And so my thing was like, I want to be able to call her, and I, I do want to be able to call Jerry, but if he doesn't, I, you know, I understand for some of the more in-depth stuff, like, we can funnel it through Cali, because it usually is more in-depth stuff, like, you know, when are the streets, certain streets gonna be paved, you know?
And I think he'll often want to talk to you, too. It'll just be, I'll be setting up a time, possibly, if he's not able to do it immediately.
Yeah, that's, I mean...
So she could package your questions.
Right.
And he could respond at designated times, instead of maybe being a little less disruptive if that's the case.
Well, and I, I think, too, that would be good, where he, you know, he would have more time to sit down and talk to someone more in-depth, I guess, but I mean, I'm not, I'm not opposed to...
You'll roll with it until it doesn't work, right?
I'm, you know, if, you know, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with it.
We're, we're not the first town to do this, and I think it, I think it's probably a correct observation by Amanda, that it typically happens in bigger places, but let's, let's give it the old college try and see how it goes.
When I, when I first heard it, the last council meeting when Cali went over it, I, I saw it from the standpoint of, depends on what side of the equation you're on, and that, you know, we've, we've talked about transparency continually, and it's almost that, in some way, David, I thought that, well, some people will interpret this as we're trying to put a lid on things, or put the information out in such a way that it's more favorably views our, our internal operations. And again, I think that, you know, I, I believe strongly that one of the things that's great about the Buchanan community is that we do have, we're all in this together, and it's, it's very comfortable. I don't think we have an adversarial relationship with our local journalists, and I almost got a sense that there were some issues at some point in time, but, you know, it's, it's also, it can streamline things, too, and can help the journalists in some ways also, I think so.
I think, I think this council has behaved very professionally, and there are uncomfortable things that occasionally pop up relative to our municipal operations, like, oh geez, we're gonna have to share this with the press. I think it's, once you get into the groove of just routinely talking about it, it's not our private business, it's the people's business, and I'll continue to subscribe to that as we all should. There are certain things, occasionally, we're talking about a property acquisition matter, or an internal disciplinary thing with an employee, or we're getting ready to honor somebody this next week that we don't, we want it to be a surprise. Those are covered under the Open Governmental Proceedings Act, but other than that, I think, I think you guys should, just like you're sitting here at the table with us, which you so often are, and we want you to have that information. So, we have a motion on the table. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of giving this new policy a shot, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. F2, the approval of Resolution 29, 2019-03, which is a general fund budget revision. I'll let Mrs. Jenkins speak to this.
This is a really, really simple one, the housekeeping budget matter. It has to do with the Arts and Culture Grant for $61,000 that was approved earlier in the year. We've received $102,000 from last year's grant in this year, and I should have revised it with the same, at the same time, but we got a $61,000 grant from Arts and Culture for the theater, and I needed to put in the receipt part of the $61,000, because we hope to draw down and get that this year, and the expense of $61,000, so it's a wash, but I do need to get it in the budget. And then we're gonna have, just so you'll know, we'll have a budget revision coming up in June, the final one, hopefully for the year, to go through each and every one of the line items and allocate anything where we're a little falling short, or where we've maybe got something to move, where we can move things around. In general, I looked at the budget, it looks pretty good, but there'll be a little bit cleanup, but this is a housekeeping, to get that Arts and Culture Grant that was approved, that it got from actually July or August, and it should have been in the budget, and it wasn't. 61 in, 61 out.
So this is Resolution 29, 2019-03 of the Council of City of Buchanan. Taking those matters into account that Ambi just set out for you, affecting both our revenues and expenditures, the $61,000 from the state on the Colonial Theater Grant. I would entertain a motion that we approve this resolution.
So move.
I have a res, I have a, I have a motion by Mr. Skinner, and I think I heard a second by Mr. Thomas, is that correct?
That's correct.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
I believe it's a roll call vote.
It is, but let's, let's pass it first. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Mary Alba is absent. Mr. Skinner?
Yes.
Mr. Rylance?
Yes.
Mrs. Buckle?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And the mayor votes yes, so Ambi, I don't have the original up here.
I have the original.
Oh, she's got it. And, and you're still comparing, now you might want to fix that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'll need to mark that out.
Disagreement.
Sorry about that, too.
Katie's over there tabulating the number of times I say Buckle.
Right.
That's the fourth.
Caught me off guard when you said it first, I thought.
We don't have to actually sign this, just mark yes or no.
Sign it right beside you.
Yeah, but...
Not much room there.
No.
No, there isn't.
I'll just put an X there.
Thomas is gonna put his slash right through the thing.
Well, how do you know that?
I've seen your signature a lot over the past 30 years.
Yours is yes, so I'm...
20, 20, 26 years.
Well, the college. Eighty-four to nine.
That's 26.
That's about your thing.
It's four to nine.
When I lost my vision.
Yeah. You couldn't write very well, you know?
Well, hell, I said...
You weren't too good yourself. I'm always told my signature would be tough to replicate.
Yeah, it would be.
So would a CJ.
Yeah, the faster you do it, the harder it's gonna cost you.
Well, I'll be Skinner. All right, she's not here, she doesn't get to sign this one. Okay, Ambi, we got that one. F3, employee health insurance matters. Let me tell you where we are. We've got two other members of council who serve on the insurance committee. We are in this repetitive, cyclical, endless situation, where over the last seven or eight years, our insurance premiums have gone from about a half a million dollars a year to $1.18 million is what we expended on health insurance for those employees who recovered this past year. And it just continues to go up. It's a good day at City Hall when we get a call that, oh, our insurance is only going up 9% or 10% this year. That's, that's a good day. And once you start getting over a million bucks a year, to, to continue to put out $100-plus thousand of our precious revenue and our taxpayers' and fee payers' monies toward health insurance, we cannot continue to sustain that money. As an organization, we have to do our very best and exercise our best responsibilities as, as those that, along with Ambi, have control of these purse strings, and try to do the right thing by our employees, but without giving it all away, selling the ranch off, or whatever the verbiage, whatever the cliche is. So the, so the insurance committee has had a couple of different presenters, one being our current provider, and another new entity, Chris Downs from Lewisburg.
Tony.
Tony, I'm sorry. Chris Tony, got the last name wrong. And we've, we've heard from them both a couple of times now. In order to have a completely level playing field, has we considered going to a semi-self-administered insurance plan. We're gonna hear one more time from Loudon Insurance early next week, the insurance committee will, and I would like to schedule a special meeting of council for next Thursday. That's nine days from today, that would be Thursday, May 23, at which we would make our decision after the members of the insurance committee and Mrs. Jenkins report to the entire council about these matters. We think that there is opportunity to save some money, not just relative to incurring more on this next year's premium, but to actually reduce our insurance premium costs.
Without watering down the coverage that we're providing to our employees.
Current employees, that's right. There will be some discussion, however, about, at some point in the near future, we've been bandying about this idea that as of January 1, 2020, that new hires coming into the city's employ would be required to participate in the payment of spousal and family insurance. We're also looking at, it's, it's nothing new in the industry, as Mr. Skinner would tell you, or as either of our insurance presenters would tell you, there is this thing known as a carve-out, which requires employees to identify if their spouses have health insurance through their own employment, that they're required to have their insurance through that other provider. Too often, we end up in situations where we have spouses who join the family plan, and they already have their own health insurance with their own employer. I'm not gonna divulge numbers as to how many of those of our 85 employees, but it's a substantial number. And if we can adopt this carve-out measure, it would require us to do it via an ordinance, it could save us maybe another couple of hundred thousand dollars a year in these...
So what does carve-out mean?
Carve-out means spouses would no longer be covered.
If they're already covered somewhere else.
And, and these are new employees going forward. What our intention is to not change anything whatsoever, be complete grandfathering of all current employees. We have, and increasingly, they're not getting any younger, our employees are getting older, and we anticipate that in the next two, three, four, five years, that 20%, 25% of our workforce, our current staff will retire, which means, that's, that's great for them. We're, we're pleased that they've reached that point where they can enjoy their retirements, but as we hire these new folks, it will allow us to be more cost-conscious going forward. I, I would defer to Mr. Skinner and Mr. Thomas to correct me or chime in, or, I'll, I'll go with our insurance guru, Mr. Skinner, first, and then Dave can speak.
Well, I would like to thank you, Mayor, for putting this insurance committee together, and I thank Ambi for participating, and Bard for participating. I think it's been a healthy exercise. We've, we've met several times. We have heard thorough reports from both our current provider as well as Mr. Tony. I've known Chris for 10 years. Chris is a health insurance expert. He's, he's, he's in Lewisburg, West Virginia, and what he has, what he, what he has quoted us is an interesting approach, and we're going to ask our current provider to see if he can, see, see if he can provide us something similar. The point is, as Mayor pointed out, we, we cannot continue to accept 10% after 10% after 10% increase. Since CJ, myself, Pam, Dave, since we've been on council, for the last three budget sessions, we've accepted roughly 10% increases in our health insurance premium. When you're north or at about a million dollars, that's 100,000 or so dollars increase every single year. And even before we became council members, it was that way. So as Dave Thomas pointed out in one of the meetings, in seven years from now, we'll, we'll have doubled our insurance premium yet again, if we continue down the same road. We absolutely have a fiduciary responsibility to provide the absolute best coverage to our employees. We value our employees. We have to provide them with what, what we absolutely possibly can, is the best coverage in the marketplace, but we also have a responsibility to the taxpayers of this community. We, we must do the best we can to save the taxpayers' money, and I believe that we're doing that with this exercise. I'm, I'm happy that we're having this conversation. I'm in this industry, and I've learned a lot by these, by having these meetings and these exercises. I think they've been very valuable to us, not only to myself, but to this, to this organization. I, I want the employees to know that we are in no way, shape, or form looking to reduce the coverages that they have right now, the current employees and the coverages that they have. We want to provide them with the very best we possibly can. So just, and sometimes in our industry, saving money equals reducing services or reducing the level of insurance that is provided. That is absolutely not the case here. We are not doing that. We, we will not do that. So I, I'm happy we've done this. I look forward to seeing the final numbers from, from our current provider and making a decision next week, but we, you know, we're, we promise our, to our, our taxpayers and to our employees that we will do the very best we can.
That's well said. The other thing that I forgot to mention, you know, we, I think when we established this committee, it was sort of an ad hoc, you know, I, I think it needs to be a standing committee.
Absolutely.
Whoever serves on it, we ought to have this, you know? And I, and I don't even think it's a once-a-year exercise. I think this is a quarterly kind of a meeting of the insurance committee. The other thing that a semi-self-insured plan would allow us to do, without getting into all of the particulars, we, because we have less than 100 employees, we have 85 employees, since we have less than 100 employees, we do not get any claim information relative to...
Hi, I'm Mark Luke Crossbushfield.
They, they won't provide it.
Yeah.
If we're semi-self-insured, as this plan has been advanced, that we are seriously looking at, we would receive that claim information. If, if there would be matters that we could invoke relative to fitness programs, or making inquiry about people who smoke, and possibly arranging plans that are different for smokers versus non-smokers, all of those kinds of things that occur in private industry, we would at least have that information, that we could take measures to try to improve those, that claim situation. Mr. Thomas?
Well, we're not gonna violate HIPAA, so that's important to put out there. A long time ago, I was on the board of directors for a captive private insurance company through the Methodist Presbyterian and Lutheran churches, and the changes that, this was a long time ago, the changes that have hit this industry, especially after the Affordable Care Act. The employer, we must be proactive in trying to control our expenses, but at the same time, provide excellent benefits to our employees. You know, I think this, these, both these presentations that were done the last couple weeks, I think has really, Dave, you summed it up, and Rob, you summed it up. I think it was an excellent exercise, and I'm looking forward to the presentation from Loudon Insurance and... Loudon Insurance, and we'll make a decision, as you said, next week, David, in regard to the special council.
We are in a bit of a bind from a timetable perspective. We can't wait and make this decision at the June 6 council meeting. We, we have to act before that.
The insurance companies need to have it done on a timely basis.
We need a solid 30 days, whether we stay with the current provider or we make the change, we do need to do, create good due diligence with our provider that, that we have time to make sure that everything get, all the Ts get crossed and the Is get dotted.
And our insurance year starts at the beginning of our fiscal year, July 1. So June 6 isn't going to cut it. So anyway, Ambie, do you want to add anything to this at this time, or do you just want to wait until next week?
No, we want the council meeting at 7:00.
I was thinking 7 o'clock next Thursday, if that works for everybody. And, and I, at that point, I, I don't, I don't see it as necessarily being a two-hour session. I think the insurance committee will make its recommendations similar to what we've shared this evening, after we get this last presentation from Loudon Insurance. And I, I think we'll make a recommendation to the council at that point.
Yes.
Does that sound like a?
Do you want, do you want the presentation to the insurance committee first and then have the council?
Yes, yes, we're, we're going to, we're, we're going to meet privately.
We're trying to get that arranged for Wednesday.
For Wednesday?
Yeah, we're trying to get that, the committee meeting.
Okay.
Jamie Powell is working on his next presentation, I would say as we speak, but hopefully he's having cotton candy kind of the.
Well, the Affordable Care Act has really set the whole industry topsy-turvy.
Well, it's created, it's, it's really created the environment to where, you're right, Mayor, we, this committee needs to continue to meet because things change, things change so quickly and so much, relative to healthcare. So we'll look forward to next week.
Yeah, so, so no action, just lots of information regarding F3. I would also ask that we table F4. We put it on the agenda. We've, we've been working with a property owner regarding several different matters, one of which has a property element to it. And I don't want to say too much more than that right now. I don't want to compromise our position and situation with this matter. If, I'll tell you this, if, if, if we get what we've been waiting for, which is an executed letter of understanding and agreement, in the next day or two, we could add that to the special meeting agenda for next Thursday. But I don't know that that's the case. So either next Thursday at the meeting on the 23rd, or at the meeting on June 6th, we'll be ready to report more on that. But just trust me on this, it'll, it'll, it's, we're working in a good direction. F5, approval to submit a DOH transportation alternative grant. We'll have Callie come back up and give us the good word on this one.
Okay. These are grant applications that Jay's worked on and myself, we've worked on these together and ones that he's worked on in past years too. So these would be the next two phases of the Riverwalk extension. They're broken into two pieces because the DOH is looking to fund things. They recommended do not ask for more than 150,000 per, per application. So we have two, and each are just under that number. And one being for the Poundstone extension from Marion to Mon Street, and the next being from Mon to Moore's.
Sure. Any other particulars for us before we entertain a motion to allow you to make that application? You, you heard Callie tell us what F5 is about. I'd entertain a motion that we approve her submission of the DOH transportation alternative grant.
So move.
Motion by Skinner is second by Rylands. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing if the need for none, I will call for that question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign motion carries. Callie, you still got your voice? F6, approval to submit DEP REAP Good Neighbor Grant.
So that would be a continuation, well, it would be another application, but it's an existing program. It's $5,000 is what we requested last year. They funded 3,500. We've been using it for the Good Neighbor Program where we're able to help people who are either older or living with a disability, or have income restraints that prohibit them from being able to clean up their property. Vincent Smith and the zoning office, along with Casey Gilbert and the Buchanan Volunteer Center, have kind of been working together to identify individuals who would benefit from that and who are truly in need. And then there's an application in place that was approved by the Housing Enforcement Board. And so this would just look to continue that with the REAP program. I would more or less just submit the same thing that was submitted last year.
It's a, it's been a real good program, and it's something I would urge the council to let us continue. I'd entertain a motion.
So move.
That we approve this. Mr. Thomas has made a motion, Mrs. Bucklew has seconded it. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing if the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Takes us down to F7. This involves Callie and Matt Gregory. Approval to submit community policing development grant to establish the new junior VIPS program. Callie, you want to start out?
I will. I'd already asked for this to be in strategic, but I've gotten a little deeper into reading the grant materials and the guidance that they've provided. And I spoke yesterday, maybe with Chief Gregory a little bit and with Steve Wyckoff. I'm concerned that maybe, especially with this being our first year with the junior VIPS, they also have a micro grant opportunity. I think that might be a little more fitting for, especially in this initial year, because for the larger grant, they want to see a regional in-scope project. And so I'm thinking, I have no doubt that it will be extremely successful, and we may want to, or you may want to use it as a model for surrounding jurisdictions. And, you know, it could be that we will apply for it at that time. I'm thinking right now, maybe we're leaning towards the micro grant opportunity and that isn't released yet, so.
So we can't act on that tonight, since we, we don't have a, there's not an application for us to even consider, is there?
That's correct.
How they, how do they define releasing, Callie?
Well, they wanted it to be at least multi-jurisdictional. I mean, we could have Buchanan and Upsher County, and I guess that would fit. But as I got into looking at example projects, they also seem to be prioritizing this year, the engagement between communities and the police that would specifically help to reduce youth violence as well. And I don't know if that was, luckily, fortunately, I don't know that we have a huge problem with that, so I don't think that's what the junior VIPS might necessarily be all about. So that was the second reason that I thought, you know, this might be a really good opportunity to look at the micro or mini grants that they do, but maybe hold off on, at least until they have a different priority, because those often change year by year. And then maybe as this grows, and if we wanted to expand it to surrounding areas.
Do you have an anticipated timeframe for this micro mini grant? Is it the, the summer sometime?
Right, right now, they have on their website that they are waiting for pending litigation to be resolved.
Okay. Well, keep us posted, and we'll consider it when it's appropriate.
And did you say violence?
Youth violence.
That is there for the one that we're probably deciding we may not want to apply for tonight. Once I got a little deeper into the guidance, that seemed to be one of the priority areas this year. And so combine that with it being multi-jurisdictional, I felt like it might be better to go with the mini grant this year, and then maybe expand to a larger proposal in future years, because I have no doubt it will go really well.
We don't have any restrictions about you have to be in city limits or anything, right?
That's true.
Participate?
And so conceivably, we could come up with something that would fit.
It would be nice to collaborate with the county and state places. On something, or, you know.
Similar to the drug task force kind of a thing, that the agencies could come together.
Do any other regional police operations have a VIPS program? I mean, we, for Bridgeport City Police have a VIPS program, but I don't, I'm not aware of it.
Junior VIPS is kind of our idea. It, it's modeled after the Explorer program, which is a national program that falls under the umbrella of, of scouting. And it, the, the main focus of, of the Explorer program, which carries over to our, our iteration of that in junior VIPS, is character development, leadership development, mentorship, primarily focused on those that have an interest in a criminal justice career. We seek to develop that, because the criteria that is set forth right now for junior VIPS focuses on high school aid students at this time. And it, it's our hope, as we grow that, and again, as I mentioned earlier, we want to start the interest with the youth academy, with the applicants that, that we have with that, and then roll that out as we get into the school year. And first and foremost, begin that, that initial partnership with the Upsher County School Board, and spreading junior VIPS into the high school. That would be the ultimate hope for, for Upsher County. But as far as the junior VIPS per se, it's our own creation model on an existing program. A lot of the guidelines are, are mirror images of the Explorer.
As you all know, both relative to our police and fire departments, it has been an increasing challenge to develop a quality pool of folks to draw upon when we have a vac, a vacancy in those departments. And I've talked at length with Matt and JB, and it's their, it's their babies, but if they can start getting out there and connecting with folks that might be these kids that are 12, 13, 14, well, hecking four, five, six, seven years, they're going to be looking at doing something for a living. And if they've had that planted in them, that a possible career path is in law enforcement or being a firefighter, that could be the best way to, to nurture our own into that career path. So you'll get back with us on the mini-micro opportunity here soon.
Keep an eye on that for sure.
Comments and announcements. Mary Albo's not here, but Pam Bucklew is. Sixth time I've said that.
Have you had any information back about when you wrote the letter to the Department of Hways over Route 33? About doing anything about the study?
Not a word, not yet. No, that's been about two weeks or so.
Yeah, 12 days. You wrote the letter to us.
It went out about two weeks, almost two weeks ago. Haven't heard anything yet.
Okay. And Mary, do we have an ordinance about people throwing candy in the parades and stuff? Or anything in writing?
I hope not, or you can just take me away right now.
Well, I'm asking, the, the situation with the horses that got spooked last Saturday?
Yeah.
I heard it was because there were kids running out, because candy was being thrown, and kids were running out, and, and that's what caused what happened.
I don't know. I hadn't heard that element of it. Matt, is there anything to that?
Well, to our knowledge, the information I got was a vehicle started up.
That's what I heard as well.
Okay. But this is what I was told, that's why I wanted to find out. So it is okay, I mean, people's may ask me, are you allowed to throw candy in the parade? So I didn't know if we had anything, right?
No ordinance restriction there?
There's no, there's no one has a, such a strawberry festival in the past, have had policies where they discourage it for safety reasons, but there's no legal remedy in place to prohibit it.
Anything else, Pam?
That's it.
Mr. Rylands?
I'm good.
Mr. Skinner?
Earlier this week, a member of the Clarksburg community, who's actually running for office, came over here, took several pictures of our downtown, and was extremely complimentary of our community. Got a lot of shares and a lot of comments on Facebook from his post. So we continue to be recognized around the region and beyond of how special we are and, and how nice of a community that we have. And I hope that our citizens continue to realize what a jewel we have here. And my parents are, are with my brother. He's moving to Arkansas to have, again, his first teaching job at the University of the Ozarks, which is in a small town called Clarksville. And Dad texted me today, and he said, "You just don't realize how beautiful Buchanan is." The town where the University of the Ozarks is, is about 8,000, it's about similar to here, but it looks like some towns around West Virginia that aren't very attractive. And even for a college town, it, it doesn't have the pop and the pizzazz that Buchanan does. So I just want to make sure that we continue to encourage our citizens and the people that call this place home and work here, that, to, to be thankful, to be, and to be positive about, about what we have here, because it, it is special. Not every place looks like this, acts like this, or feels like this, so. And I hope everyone enjoys the strawberry festival.
Mr. Thomas?
I've been asked not to pontificate today, so I'm.
Wonder who asked you that?
It must have been when you got your ID card.
Yeah, and he said, "If you be quiet, I'll take you to council."
Wow, let's use that more often in the future.
Better watch it, you'll spend the night here.
I got a couple of quick things. The city recorder timetable is in your package, but I want the community to again be aware that if you are interested in serving as the city recorder for about 11 months, the deadline to submit your letter to City Hall, either hand-delivered to City Hall, attention, me, or postmarked by, that's Saturday, May 25th. We may not get it until Monday, but right after that, on Tuesday, May 28th, remember, we have a special council meeting to determine the applicants who will be interviewed, and then we have another special meeting on Tuesday, June 4th, at 6 o'clock, to interview those candidates who you've determined at the May 28th meeting that you want to hear from. So the only, folks have asked, what's it take to be the city recorder? You have to be a resident of the city of Buchanan for at least 60 days, and you have to be a resident of the state of West Virginia for one year. Other than that, as long as you're legally entitled to vote in a city election, you're qualified to apply, as long as you're not delinquent, delinquent for payment of any city tax. That's in our city charter, going all the way back to 1933. So there you have it. The only other thing I would mention to council, these events that we have done over the past many years, that we will start with tomorrow, when you think about Webb Grove, and you think about Fred Goday, both who died while they were members of our police force, I'd encourage you, if you can break loose for an hour, it's going to be a spectacular celebration and ceremony tomorrow as we unveil the wall of blue. Thursday, the Staggered Thing at 3 o'clock, that, that one's a surprise. I can't tell you who we're, we're honoring. We know Fred Goday will be honored tomorrow, and the late Joe Bennett will be honored Friday during Friendly Way Day, also at 3 o'clock at the Public Safety Complex. There's a somber element. We're honoring two folks posthumously with Fred and Joe, but longtime members of our organization, and it'd be nice to, to have some support.
Real quick, since we haven't had a meeting since, congrats to Ambie as, as the Chamber of Commerce's Businesswoman of the Year, and thanks for the, for city's participation.
Yeah, I think, didn't we recognize?
Yeah, we did.
Oh, well, I wasn't there, so.
You're out of order, Mr. Skinner.
But it did.
She's going to start going to her head.
And congratulations to your father, too.
Oh, yeah.
We have a short executive session. I promise it'll be short.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's a pending litigation matter. Tom O'Neill and Ambie will join us. I'd entertain a motion, no, no decisions will be made. It's not, nothing like that. Entertaining a motion during the executive session. Motion in a second. Call for the question. All those in favor of joining the executive session, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign motion carries. Thank you, ladies.